We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council meeting for tonight. This is our regular voting meeting for this evening, which is Monday, August of 15th, 2022. Our invocation will be done by Reverend Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church. And after that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller, please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again today. Thank the Lord for another opportunity to call on your name. Thank the Lord for each one of the City Council members, our mayor, and this community we live in. Lord, I pray, Lord, for a hedge of protection. Lord, I pray for wisdom and knowledge, and, Lord, that it helps us to direct in each and everything that's undertook to do here tonight. And we ask you, Lord, to just have your will and way in each one of our lives, and we'll be careful, Lord, to give you the praise and honor and glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Miller, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Berryhill, we appreciate the invocation. We like the marquee that's up there on Heritage Baptist Church this week. Yes, sir. Thank you so much for announcements and presentations. I just would like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council regular voting meeting. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. This is an official meeting. We'll actually be taking from the items that were discussed last Thursday at our legislative work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over, and then we can go forward with the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from this requirement, we will discontinue your conversation by turning the microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation in the audience, or be disruptive while you are at the podium. We ask that you would just direct your information and your questions and concerns if you are presenting to that chairperson. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments on zoning matters. And if you have any cell phones, any electronic devices, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person representing the agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. If you have something new to add from the legislative work session, we invite you at that time to share that information with us. Myself and council members will possibly ask for clarifying questions or anything additional to what we did not receive, or anything that's come up new from last Thursday. This is not a question-and-answer format. It's really here for us to hear the information, take that information, absorb it, deliberate, and make our decision. Each person has five minutes to speak. There's totality for each side. For those that are in favor of the item, you have 20 minutes, and for those in opposition are 20 minutes. And each person has five minutes to speak. When you come forward to speak, there are cards that are out on the table. We ask that you would please pull those cards out and hand it to Ms. Vicky Acker, to my right, our city clerk. And that information should be your home address and your name for the record. Please say that when you come to the microphone. Give us your name and address for the record. And I believe that's it. If you have any printed materials, we ask that you would please give that information to Ms. Acker, our city clerk. She will make copies and distribute that information to us. And we appreciate, last week, one of the applicants was gracious enough to leave some information for us to be added to our agenda as they presented some documents in some frames and posters for us to see with their agenda item. Again, if you come to the end of the meeting during comments and citizens and delegates, if the items that are listed are not what you wanted to talk about, we're here to receive your information. Come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you can talk about anything that is germane to the city of Douglasville. Now, we will move on with the agenda. You can follow along with the paper agenda and/or follow us on the screen. So now, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. So I will open the floor for a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda for August 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. We have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to adopt the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for August 15th, 2022. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The regular meeting agenda is adopted for tonight, which is August 15th, 2022. Now, I open the floor, item number six, to open the floor for the approval of the minutes of July 28th, 2022 legislative work session and executive session, and minutes of August 1st, 2022, regular meeting and executive session. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Did you get it, Ms. Acker? Who was it? Mr. Estes? Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Estes. The second, did you get Councilman Adams? May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Councilman Adams has been properly moved in second to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have any comments, questions, any corrections from the elected body in regards to the minutes? Alrighty, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Now, we will move to the consent agenda. I open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any questions, comments, or any concerns as it relates to the consent agenda? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We'll move on then to item number eight, Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight under Finance to consider. First is to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Reeves Young LLC for the RFP 2022-003 Jesse Davis Park Improvements Construction in the amount of $21,910,988. Mr. Marcus Thompson, do you have information for us, sir?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street. I have no additional information at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments that we did not cover on Thursday night when discussing this item and the bid process and the awarding of the bid, or the plan to award the bid to Reeves Young LLC? Any questions that were not clarified with Mr. Thompson's help on Thursday night? Okay, seeing none, then, we'll move forward, and I will make a motion that we approve item 22-249.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-249 by the chair and second by Councilmember Estes. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-249 is approved.
That's exciting, Madam Mayor, that we see that we are now going to start the construction of the revamping of Jesse Davis Park, by the way.
Yes, sir. It's exciting.
All right, moving on. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Barto Paving Company Incorporated for road resurfacing for the 2022-23 LMIG completion, Project RFB 2022-006. I see Mr. Greg Roberts here, fresh back from vacation, coming to address us about this. Thank you, sir. Good to see you back.
Had to get some fun in the sun. Greg Roberts, Public Services Department. I trust that Mr. Dresdo handled everything perfectly the other night. One thing that may or may not have been pointed out, and I do not know that it was a question, but I will point out that the low bid of $993,043.74 is just over $236,000 above our estimate. But those estimates were put together, as you recall, late 2021, so we've seen some pretty significant increases of costs. But we're also seeing some costs come down. Everything related to asphalt resurfacing is directly hit hard by anything related to oils and fuels. And then they've got their personnel costs and equipment costs as well. Everything is up. But we are seeing some things tick down now, so I feel confident we can still land maybe higher than the original estimate, but less than this number if prices modulate like if they feel like they're going to in the coming weeks.
Just another effect of what we're seeing in the oil industry, and the increase is there, and that's directly related. Questions, comments for Mr. Roberts? Yes, Mr. Estes, go ahead.
This is actually for staff instead of Mr. Roberts, I believe, but at least on my screen, page three, is actually showing the scoring and such from the first item. Everything else looks to be correct for this item, but the Rayland and Reeves Young scores is showing on page three for me.
Yes, sir, I see that also. Now, we had to correct information on Thursday night, did we not? We did have the information that was provided to us, so it looks like there's a page out of place.
We will correct that. It could be due to scanning a page, yes.
Page two, I believe, gives the information as to the bidding. And we do have prior experience with Barto that have been doing work for us at present. Is that correct, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, sir. They have done really good work for us, and to my knowledge, all of these contractors that bid on the project are great contractors.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Greg. It's good to see you back.
Yes, ma'am.
And I apologize, I was just texting away when you were on vacation, but you got everything done anyway.
They better have.
Yes, sir.
We've got great folks.
Yes, sir. So I was looking on page number 10 at the project descriptions, and it, all of these are in the city. Those first 10, it starts with Alpha Way, Big B Road, Cherokee.
Yes, these are all city streets. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so primarily, it looks like Wards 2 and 3. It might be some of...
Because of the way I'm looking at it, let's see, trying to find page 10. Okay, got it.
Number 6 is Ward 4.
Okay, so it's all across, outside of...
Yes, these were approved last November or December by council.
Okay, this is a good list. I was just making certain, trying to visualize where everything was going on at the same time.
There are some sections of Big B Road that are outside the city, but we're doing the parts that the city is responsible for.
Okay.
Where we're on both sides of the roadway.
I try to keep it together, but I see that Connolly and Cherokee Boulevard are the ones in the city that connect to Big B, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds good, city lumps. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Any other? Any reason not to go forward? We need to get that paving done, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Dresdo did mention something about it being the fall before we would probably see any of this work going on.
Yeah, they've got us currently on schedule for October.
Okay.
This should be a quick project with 10 streets in October. Usually, we're good paving weather up until just right before Thanksgiving, but hey, you never know.
That's right. Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. And Mr. Dresdo, by the way, did a great job Thursday night.
He's an awesome young man.
Yes, sir. All right, on item B, item 22-294, make a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-294 with the explanation given to us by our Public Works Director, Mr. Greg Roberts. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-294 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you, Coach. We'll move on then to item 13, Planning and Development Committee. We're back to Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight under Planning and Development. We'll start with item A, hold a public hearing and consider requests for change in zoning from G.C., General Commercial District, to Light Industrial District for 11.12 acres, located at 12051 Veterans Memorial Highway, Land Lot 825, District 18, Section 2, Parcel A002, Parcel ID 0825182A002, application by Brandon Development Company, care of Arthur Brandon. Ms. Reed?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shayla Reed, Community Development at 6701 Church Street. There are no additional items or information for this particular piece.
Okay, thank you. If we might have council or Madam Mayor have any questions of Ms. Reed, and then if you have questions of the applicant, I understand that they are here and are available to answer any questions. Is there any further discussion concerning this item? Yes, Dr. Burdanley?
Thank you, Chairman. Adams, I just have a question for the developer in regards to the warehouse.
Okay, let's give them a minute to come down.
Thank you.
My name is Arthur Brandon with Brandon Development Company. We're located at 2341 Forest Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia.
Go ahead, Dr. Burdanley.
Thank you. Just one question. I'm just looking at the picture of the two homes where the, if this is approved, that's where the warehouse would go. Is that correct? Just in that space?
Yes.
Where would the entrance of the trucks?
It would be on the, I believe, if you're facing the property, it's on the left side.
The left side? My concern is, of course, I'm excited about business always. My concern is that that is a two-lane highway, and the truck traffic coming from Bankhead, of course, I'm glad that we have the 92 bypass, but do you have, have you had a traffic study completed in regards to how many trucks will be coming in and out?
We've just gone on past experience. We don't know the exact user, but in our experience, that, the amount of traffic on that road is not a problem for people taking a left out of the road.
Okay.
Dr. Burdanley, maybe we could ask Ms. Reed, is there a requirement of a traffic study to be done for a project of this size?
Yes, sir. So the applicant, the square footage that was provided does not warrant one.
So it's not warranted to have one because of the size of this project?
Correct.
The square footage of the building?
Correct.
Okay. Does that help you, Ms.?
It does. Thank you so much.
Other questions, comments? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to recognize the fact that I understand the aesthetics of your building would be aesthetically pleasing in comparisons to what we have right now. But my two biggest concerns are, one, that street right there, Connolly, runs directly into two elementary schools, and I'm not sure what you can do to convince me and assure me that we will not have trucks. I understand also that it's a very small building. We've looked at that, so what about four truck base? Not very many. So that's two elementary schools. And then, secondly, the property that you're looking at, there are two homes sitting right there. I'm not sure if both of them are occupied. I know at least one of them is occupied right now with a family. They have children. And right now, it is zoned for families and children, and I have a hard time displacing a family who has children, who are actually attending our schools right now, to build a warehouse that it's not even zoned for at this time.
Well, this project will take some time, so this family will have plenty of time to relocate. You know, it's just one family. That's pretty unusual on a development situation like this, so it's pretty minimal impact. So, you know, I don't think that would be appropriate.
Go ahead, that's fine.
So the owner of the property or the seller of the property, are they the occupants of that home? Is there any information that could be provided to answer Ms. Miller's question?
Hi, Rob Thomas. I'm actually the listing broker for the property. Maybe I can speak to that a little bit clearer. There are two houses on there. There's one that has a single person in there, and then there's another one that we just recently, someone actually rented on a month-to-month basis. They're fully aware that we're selling this. They've been aware for over a year now, and even once we do the sale, we are definitely going to make sure they have time to relocate to another place, so...
So the two homes on the property, in addition to the non-operating car wash, all three of those structures would be removed from the property?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And I understand, I did not know that the frame house was occupied. I thought maybe the brick...
Well, it was just recently hardship situation that the owner allows someone to just stay there just temporary.
I got you.
So it's not primary residence. I mean, it's a residence for two different people, however, it's not the original. These are rental properties, I'm trying to say.
Alrighty.
But right now, it is being utilized with someone else just for temporary use because due to a hardship situation you're under.
Just out of curiosity, how long has the property been listed for sale?
It's been listed for sale for about nine months now. It's been on the contract for six, because we had to go through all this with DRC and different things. We had to cite plans and everything, had to get taken care of, so it's been on the contract pending, being able to get it rezoned as well. So that was one of the conditions.
Okay. Yes, did that, did that help you, Ms. Miller? Did that answer your question?
Sir.
Okay.
But there's no, just so you know, you mentioned elementary school. None of the children, there's one child, and they're in high school. Actually, they go to Alexander. This was a hardship situation. They actually go to Alexander High School.
Correct, but when I was speaking of elementary schools, there's two elementary schools just behind that, that that street feeds into.
I understand. Right.
And so that is a concern as well.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. I was just trying to picture in my mind, as Councilmember Miller was speaking about the elementary schools, Eastside and Burnett. Correct. Those are two schools. So is Connolly and Big, is it very far? Do they intersect?
Connolly would be to the west, there on the corner, the corner of Connolly and Veterans Memorial is the Used Appliance Store.
Right.
And it would be the next business over, which this would neighbor it. This would be next to it. If you look on page 33, you'll see the proposed site plan, and the corner of Connolly and Veterans Memorial is to the east, and then, I'm not sure how far down it is to Dura Lee Lane. It's several buildings down, probably about three buildings down before you get to Dura Lee.
Right.
Connolly is not a through street. Connolly dead ends into the two schools, actually.
So they shouldn't be coming down that road, any trucks. Trucks shouldn't be coming down there.
Is there anyone that can tell us, is that considered a no-truck street, Connolly Drive?
Public Works.
It may not be posted as searched, but we can give that tag here.
Okay.
That could be a remedy, to make certain that people don't drive down that street.
And then, the other one, Dura Lee or whichever, is kind of far away. And I guess the other, that the realtor answered, is that it was a hardship case, but it's month-to-month.
Yes, in fact, at this point, both of the leases are month-to-month. The other resident is beyond their lease, and we allow them to stay month-to-month as well, pending the sale.
Okay.
So, yes. And again, you know, across the street is the petroleum, Young Refinery, is across from the realtor, I should say.
Yes, sir.
And we got, you know, so it's definitely in a commercial zoned area.
Yes, sir.
As far as corridors is concerned, so that's why we felt comfortable with taking this offer.
Coach Watts?
Yes, looking at that current land use map, if I'm looking at this correctly, the piece of property that we're talking about that has the two houses on it, is it right now zoned general commercial?
No.
Huh?
It shows that...
The R2 borders it, but the property we're talking about is general commercial right now.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want a clarification on that. Thank you.
Is that correct, Ms. Reed? Okay. Other questions, other comments? Yes, Mr. Davis?
This is for Mr. Dotson. Mr. Dotson, how many years has it been since something was built on that strip?
How many years has, has anything been built in that area?
Yes.
Well...
Don't give me an exact...
The last thing I can remember, you had something called the Tiger's Den built about 55 or 60 years ago. There was a bowling alley built in the early 60s down there, and that's about it, as far as my memory goes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yes, we have had a Dollar General constructed in the...
That's a given.
Well...
Maybe that starts...
An economic engine of progress, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. May start some growth.
Anything else, Mr. Davis?
No, we're good with Tiger Den.
All right. Yes, Ms. Miller, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I have a question for legal. I know that we've had issues before where neighboring properties have wanted to zone like that neighboring property, and about a quarter of a mile down the road, where we're looking at redevelopment of our mill site, could this negatively affect us when we're trying to bring in retail or residential?
Well, zoning doesn't occur in vacuum. I mean, the fact that you rezone something, you certainly may get another application for a similar-like zoning. It doesn't mean you're obligated to grant it every single time, but, you know, I don't, I personally don't see any negative effect on your mill site.
Okay.
I mean, you got to remember, it was industrial at the time.
It was.
For many, many years till it burned down, so I can't tell you, you know, I can't tell you what your mill site redevelopment will ultimately look like, because that's still in a state of flux.
Correct.
But from my perspective, no, I don't see a negative impact.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Other questions, comments? Okay, I'm going to ask a question of the applicant, just as a reiteration of something that we discussed on Thursday, because in our staff's report to us, they made the statement that the planning board had voted recommending denial, and the staff comments mentioned, if approved, staff recommends the following: require installation of 50-foot natural buffer to remain or to be increased by an adjoining, for any adjoining residential lot, in addition to the required 100-foot setback to achieve an opaque visual screen. Futuraneous amendment would be needed from charter area of mixed use. Is there anything concerning your development plan that would cause you to need or request or expect any variance from the buffers that are in place at this time?
I was going to say, the plans that we have now show those buffers, so we have So we have an undisturbed buffer between us and the residential area, and we do not mind adding additional landscaping to help the neighbor if that's not enough, or fencing, anything like that, we would do. And I know Nicole Miller was mentioning before about her concern. One thing, this building will be very attractive, and I don't know if you would know, it's a distribution building. If you've seen some of the newer distribution buildings around town, they're very attractive. You know, they have glass in the office area. Will screen the air conditioning units. It's gonna be a very attractive project.
Okay.
One last question.
Yes, Coach.
This type of development, will it require holding pond or runoff, is that?
It's shown in the.
Detention pond, that's what I mean.
It's shown in the.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay. Other question or comment?
Quick thing.
Yes.
As regarding the aesthetics, I mean, we don't really have much control over what you do, but, and I appreciate the fact that you created a building that has some detail to it. I think one strong suggestion that I would make is because of the scale of the building, and you can't do anything about a hundred thirty, you've got a hundred thirty thousand square feet on the roof, you can only do so much. But one, one of the things you can do is break that facade up a little bit more to make it look like a number of smaller buildings. It doesn't take much to do that, just some recesses and critical points along the facade. That way, at least when you're coming down Veterans Memorial, and you see the building at an angle, even though it'd be down a little bit, when you see it in an angle, it starts to look like it's several buildings rather than one enormous building. I think that would be something you could do.
That's a good idea.
Virtually no cost.
We had talked about doing some of that anyway, and I think it does. We'll make it interesting and not just a big blob of concrete.
That would be appreciated.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, council or Madam Mayor? All right, this being a public hearing, we do need to give the opportunity, if there's any new information that someone that may not have been here on Thursday would like to add, that be either for or against, I would ask that you come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and we'd like to hear from you. Seeing none, then we will close this portion of the public hearing and move forward. In the face of the discussion that we've had tonight concerning this, I would like to make a motion to approve item twenty-two dash two seventeen with the conditions that our staff have mentioned concerning the setbacks and buffer requirements being held in place as is written in our ordinance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve with the conditions that were stated by our community development director, Ms. Shayla Reed. Do we have a motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. This one properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash two seventeen with conditions that were previously stated by community development director, Ms. Shayla Reed. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this item? Any more dialogue from council? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. Item twenty-two dash two seventeen is approved with the stipulations as previously stated.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to item B. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for packaging and distribution facility for property zone light industrial being twenty-five point eighty-eight acres at twenty-one twenty and twenty-eighty-four Skyview Drive, Land Lot four eighty, four eighty-one, five twenty-one, and five twenty-two. District eighteen, section two, parcels one and three. Parcel ID zero four eight zero one eight two zero 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 one and zero five two one one eight two zero 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 three. Application by Home Chef, Rush Labs LLC, care of John Cluse, and Ms. Shayla Reed will help us with that.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. There are no additions to this item as well.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Again, we've heard the presentation from the applicant on Thursday night. The applicant's representative is with us tonight. If we have additional questions or comments of them, is there anyone that has another question or comment? Okay, is there any new information that the applicant needed to provide? Okay. Then, as a part of the public hearing, we need to ask if there's anyone here to speak, either for or against the application, please come forward. Seeing none, then we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we will move forward. On item B, item twenty-two dash two one eight, make a motion that we approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash two eighteen. Do we have any additional comments or questions, or any concerns from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash two eighteen is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have item C.
Congratulations.
Consider a request for revised plat approval for Van Zant Road for the purpose of combining parcel three and a portion of parcel six for three point three one six acres on Van Zant Road, Land Lot nine oh three, District eighteen, Section two, parcel three and six. Parcel ID number zero nine zero three, one eight two zero zero three, and zero nine three one eight two zero 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 six. Application by Dickinson Investments, LLP, care of Doug Dickinson. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. There are no additions to this item as well.
Okay. Questions, comments? We have seen the plat on Thursday. We have seen their plan, what they would like to do to combine and move parcels around as far as increasing one over the other for this revised plat. Everything is in order, Ms. Reed, as far as being able to sign that and approve it if we approve, correct? Okay. Anyone have any question or comment?
I had a quick comment. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Reed. This is for the storage, the air control storage facility.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Well, I need to send that to parcel. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make certain I had the right project in my head.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other? Seeing none, then we will move forward. I will make a motion that we approve item twenty-two dash two seventy-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash two seventy-two. Do we have any additional comments as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash two seventy-two is unanimously approved.
Moving on to item D.
Congratulations.
Pardon?
I apologize, I will send congratulations to the gentleman.
Item D, consider whether to accept the petition of Marsan Douglasville LLC and Marsan Douglas Co. LLC to annex fifteen point three one two acres of land located at parcel number zero one five eight zero two five zero zero seven three, Land Lot one fifty-eight, second district, fifth section, Douglas County, Georgia, into the city limits of Douglasville. Mr. Joel Dodson and Ms. Miranda Jordan are going to handle that item.
Good evening. So we do have some additional information from the meeting on Thursday that we would like to provide today. First, like to just reiterate and echo what Mr. Dodson said on Thursday. This is purely a procedural matter. What council is being asked to do tonight is decide whether it will accept the petition that's coming forward for annexation. You're not deciding on the actual annexation matter at this, at this time. This is just to decide whether to accept officially the petition as a legislative act, and then if that were to be accepted moving forward, proper notice would be given to the county, but also to the Board of Education. And then the procedure would begin from there. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Joe Fowler to come forward to provide a little bit more information and to take questions.
Evening, everyone. Joe Fowler, Post Office, Box four eighty-nine in Douglasville. And I'm here with Mr. Joe McGory. Done business with the city before. He has a nearly complete building on Blair's Bridge Road. There are two parcels that are involved in this transaction. One of them is within the city limits of the city of Douglasville, right where Bright Star Connector dead ends into Bright Star Road. There's a parcel there owned by Marsan Douglasville. It's seventeen point four four acres that happens to be in the city limits. The best, as I can tell by doing research, is that it was annexed into the city at the city's request in connection with the construction of the Bright Star Road Connector. And so it's there on the opposite side of Bright Star Road from all the industrial work that has been previously approved by the city. It's zoned general commercial. It's been on the market for sale for a number of years. There has been no contract that's come forward that has been closed. It's now under contract to Mr. McGory's company. Adjacent to the west is a parcel that's in the city. It's twenty-nine point five acres. It is owned by the same company. And the proposal is to do this, to annex fifteen point three two one acres of that county parcel, so that it can be combined with the parcel that's within the city to make a tract on which would be, would be built, the two buildings. I supplied this earlier to the city. I hope you've had a chance to look at it. What would not be annexed is a strip along the west side of the annexation parcel. Now, the reason that is important is this. There was a company that proposed to construct four buildings on the city parcel, the county parcel that lies to the west of it, the one about which we've just spoken, and the two parcels immediately to the north. One of them is at twenty-six eighty-one Bright Star Road, a smaller one at twenty-six eighty-three Bright Star Road, and the third parcel of approximately twenty-five acres owned by Janice Buchanan, known only as parcel thirteen. Those two parcels, the three, the small one and the other two, total approximately forty acres or thereabouts. And the plan was to annex the portion of the county property that lies to the west of what's currently in the city at the end of Bright Star Road, and all those other parcels going north. And I represented the client that sought to do that. But the problem was, the county noticed that it would create an island right at the very top of the hill where Bright Star tops out and then goes back down towards seventy-eight. So we had to withdraw that application. It could not be annexed and rezoned. What we then did, tried to do, was to de-annex this parcel that the city annexed back in two thousand six or seven, the seventeen point four four acres. And the city said, no, we're not gonna de-annex it. So what happened is, those three parcels that lie to the north of the two tracks that are reflected on the, on the drawing that you have, that developer got two buildings approved by Douglas County for the construction of two tracks, or the two buildings, one two hundred thousand, six hundred square feet, and the other a hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred eighty square feet. They are directly across from the big buildings that Silverman built on Bright Star Road. Now, this property is bounded on the north by those two industrial buildings, not yet built, but certainly plans to construct them right away. It's bounded on the east by the Silverman Buildings and Bright Star Road Connector. It's bounded on the west by the Rock Quarry that's within the city limits, zoned, heavy industrial. And it's zoned on the south by single-family residential properties that are in the county. The owner of this property has been trying to do something with it for a long time, and you've heard me describe a portion of it. There was another contract that didn't go through because things didn't work out with the proposed commercial use, because it was not big enough. So you have a parcel of land there, seventeen point four four acres in the city, a portion that we're seeking to annex from the county, but into and joining this city parcel for the construction of a couple of buildings that you see described on that drawing that you have. One is a hundred eighty-five thousand square feet, the other is a hundred and thirty-three. The truck courts will be facing, the buildings will face one another, they will not face the border toward the single-family residential. In effect, we call for a large buffer in that area. We made the application to rezone. It sat for a bit as an analysis was undertaken to determine if it were appropriate to rezon it. I think staff has now concluded through their lawyers that it is okay, and that's why we're here. And Mr. McGory can come explain precisely what he has in mind, if you'd like to hear from him. That's sort of the factual analysis which brings us to this place.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you. Joe McGory, nine ten, Davis Bend, Alpharetta, Alpharetta, Georgia. I welcome the opportunity to be in front of all of you again, and thank you so much. I, as Joe mentioned, I co-developed the, I am co-developing the Blair's Bridge project that's going up right now. We've seen significant activity. I think we'll have an announcement soon on some tenants there. And it's going very well. We enjoyed working in the city. This parcel, I'd actually started looking at three years ago, and couldn't really get my arms around it. Some of the annexation issues were part of that. The other group then put it under contract and had it under contract for quite a long time, so I, I waited it out. And then on January first of this year, the owner called me and said the contract had been dropped. It was a good New Year's Day announcement for me. And so I started pursuing it again. What I've been doing around Atlanta and somewhat in Florida, central Florida, is I do shallower bay warehouses, usually nothing over two hundred and twenty thousand square feet. In this case, it'd be even shallower, probably two hundred to, one ninety to two hundred thousand square feet. And I'm looking for more of a ten percent office finish on most of my projects at least, to try and drive more jobs in that regard. It's not really a warehousing operation in, in the classic sense of trucks running in and out. It's a more limited distribution quotient. And it's been very successful. I've been very blessed to have a lot of good activity on the seven or eight buildings that I've developed. Any specific questions on the project itself?
I do not receive that map, the planning map.
I don't have that map in our packet.
It would have been helpful to see that.
You just pass it over, let them.
I purposely tried to not really densify the project as much as you, some developers would do it. I found that's not usually a good recipe for success, trying to keep more open areas where possible. And certainly respect the neighbors behind us as far as having a generous setback.
So it appears, and I want to see this drawing because what I have may or may not match up, it appears that the buildings would sit basically one on each side of the plantation, is that plantation pipeline?
Yes, that's, that's, that was part of my trepidation initially when looking at the site, was there is a gas line there, but I believe there is an opportunity to drive over it only. So we would have a driveway over it, but it is straddled by that petroleum line, which I think is a fairly new construction, or was recently constructed or redone.
So it appears, from the drawing, and I'll pass this down to the balance of the council, and we did not have this, it appears that this is a multi-tenant building, what you're proposing, both of them. So you would have different tenants that would have different hours, you would have, they would have different needs as far as trucks in and out. It'd be, as you said, ten percent, you're looking for a ten percent office space of that total. So you may have seven or eight tenants in the building. You would not have one distribution center.
That's correct. I look at a speculative multi-tenant program as my agenda.
Okay. And so it would appear that there are probably half a dozen or maybe more than that that would actually, residences that would actually abut the south side of the property. But your site plan here, or your development plan here, whatever we may call it, preliminary, does not include the area behind basically the balance of that subdivision, which is in the county. In other words, your building would not go, would not go back into.
Yeah, I'm not even looking to do trailer storage or anything like that. It's, I don't know what we'd do with it, honestly.
Well, you, you would need to know basically what you were going to do with it before you developed this building on it.
Yeah, it would be fallow. I mean, in my mind, I wasn't planning to use it to, for any development activities. I don't know if there's another purpose that someone may have for it, but I, I was gonna, the detention pond would have sort of been the end of my development in that regard.
And that's what the blue is on this drawing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So having said that, Mr. Fowler mentioned it, and I remember this vaguely, because we've talked about this property several times, there was a, there was potentially a request by the, by the county to de-annex it for that developer? What, what property? We have in the city already?
The seventeen point four four acres, we attempted to de-annex so that would not create, we wouldn't have the problem of the island.
Correct.
City said no.
City said no. Madam City Manager?
That was a conversation with staff as to the reason why we would not be presenting that to you all, because of the fact that you would be creating an island. And typically, those are not necessarily things that we, we would bring before you. But I can have staff explain.
Please.
So as, thank you. So as mentioned, an unincorporated island is something that we cannot, I guess, allow within the city. Boundaries have to touch by one-eighth the aggregate boundary per state law. So in order for that to happen, the boundary is much touch, and you would have to have a fifty-foot distance of land to allow for those boundaries to still allow for them to be contiguous.
Okay. Counselor, can you help me with that? Are we creating an island?
I can, I can tell you how the property came to be annexed into the city, and a reason it wasn't de-annexed. it wasn't de-annexed. You may recall the Bright Star Connector was constructed solely by the city.
Yes, sir.
And at the time, I know you'll find this hard to believe, but at one time, the city and the county didn't get along very well. When it was completed and ready to open, the county came out and barricaded Bright Star Connector and said that we didn't have the right to open it because they, we didn't own the land on both sides of the road. The county told the city, "Well, you can't open it unless you put up a light and widen the road," I forget, "by adding another lane or two." I believe in my memories, Joe, that property was owned by the estate of Marvin Nodbit.
Exactly right. Known as Mar Sand Properties, but it's the old, now deceased lawyer, Marvin Nodbit.
We, we solved that problem. I got the executive annexed the property directly across from the road, so we controlled both sides, and we opened it up. And that's one of the reasons we shouldn't ever de-annex that property directly across from the road in the event that you don't get along with the county again in the future.
And they shut it down.
Okay.
I know.
Funny how development decisions are sometimes made on petty issues.
If I'm not mistaken, one of the first public meetings that I went to on-site as a ribbon cutting was to open the Bright Star Connector. And that was about 10 years ago, 10 and a half years ago, after we relocated it. Yeah, okay. Questions, comments? Folks, I need help.
So we're saying no, the city said no because it would create.
We would not de-annex it because then it would cause a problem with the county.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Other comments, questions?
I do have a question. How come, could you still do it without the city portion?
No, ma'am. The project won't work unless we are able to combine the city portion with some of the county portion.
So that 29 acres in the county and the 15 that you want to annex from the county into the city to add to what the city already has will give you the acres that you need?
The density that you need, yeah, that's the issue, is that the geometry of the site doesn't work to get, especially with the, with the gas line running through it. The seller won't break up the property. So, and the linear piece that you see on the end here doesn't lend itself to much at all as far as development goes. So I think the only way to make this property work is to either be in one or the other, really frankly, for the density that you'd need for a project like this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, or head coach?
So this, this site, if it were annexed and the properties joined, is already, what's it zoned now?
General commercial on the city piece. The county piece is residential low-density, matching the properties to the south. So if you permit the annexation of the portion that's in the county, we will apply for the rezoning of both following the annexation, light industrial, for what you see here.
Ms. Reed, do you concur with that?
Pardon me?
Do you concur, Ms. Reed, with the zoning? No, Mr. Fowler, I'm not questioning. I just, I just need to hear it from staff.
I'm not sure the word concur, concur with me. Like, are you saying I'm agreeing to it? Are you saying that? I'm sorry.
The question, it's, it's our understanding from Mr. Fowler that the county property is currently zoned.
That's correct.
Low, low-density residential, and the portion of the property that's in the city that would cover this site is zoned as general commercial.
That's correct.
So the zonings that are now are general commercial, what's in the city, low-density residential, that's what is presently in the county, that they are requesting us to consider an annexation to accept a petition to annex into the city. Yes, Ms. Estes? Put us out of this hole.
Aren't we kind of getting ahead of ourselves? Or is my understanding correct that, that this is just voting to accept the discussion, basically?
Yes. What you're considering is whether or not to, to accept the petition for annexation. Even though you, even though you mentioned zoning, it's not a zoning here.
Not a zoning issue.
He'll tell you why he wants to come in and what he would like to have it zoned if it's accepted, but this isn't really a zoning decision tonight.
Thank you.
So the, so we're, we would be voting whether or not to allow them to, or they would petition for the annexation, go the county and the Board of Education, jump to those who.
If the city accepts the petition for annexation, we must, within 30 days, transmit the petition by verifiable means of delivery, certified mail, etc., to both the county commissioners and the Board of Education. After receipt, both of those bodies have 45 days to make an objection if they so wish. To make an objection would require a majority vote of both bodies, or any body that objects. If an objection's filed, you then go to a mediation process, arbitration set up by statute. Only after all that got resolved would you then have a hearing at a later date to consider the annexation and any rezoning. If you accept the petition, you are not obligated to later annex it or rezon. But the first step is whether or not you accept the petition. If you accept it, notice gets sent to both those other political bodies. If you don't accept it, nothing happens. It just dies right now for the time being.
It's like sending your application into Harvard. Don't pick out your dorm room yet. You still have to get accepted into the school.
Well, to, to Councilman Estes' point, you know, we're, you know, we're kind of looking a little bit further past what Council, our council just told us, so.
Well, to make an intelligent decision about.
That's true.
That you would have to have some idea of what the Afka wants to do with it, and I don't know any way to figure that out unless you ask him what he wants to have it zoned for and what he's going to build, so.
Well, he's pretty much explained that.
Yes. Other questions or comments? I'll ask one. If we do not accept this petition, we decide not to accept the petition, does that put time limits on them before they can come before us as with a zoning petition, before they could come back?
I don't, the Act said nothing about it. I don't know, if you turn down, if somebody makes one and you vote to formally do it, yeah, there's a time limit. You don't accept the petition, I didn't see anything in the statute that says they have to wait. I can look at it again, but I don't, I don't recall anything.
Gee, Joe, you're no help.
It's not a zoning decision.
Correct.
So the ordinance prohibition on coming back, it's either six or 12 months. I can't remember, in one county, one city, they differ. It's not a zoning.
Not a zoning decision. It's, it's just a petition for.
What we basically have is on behalf of the property owner who's been sitting on this commercial piece for a long time, having been annexed by agreement with the city, it's just stuck because nothing can happen. It's not big enough in order to do something in the market that is there.
And it's been annexed by us at the request of, we have requested that it be annexed into the city to solve a previous problem.
Yes, it solved that particular problem at the time.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept item 22-284 as to accepting the petition for potential annexation into the city of Douglasville.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve item 22-284, not approving the zoning, but approving the acceptance of the petition.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a second, but Mayor Protem, after a lengthy discussion with the council, do we have any additional comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Dotson, Ms. Jordan, Attorney Fowler, developer. Any other comments? Not hearing any. All those in favor of adopting or approving 22-284 for consideration to whether to accept the petition of Marshall or Mar Sand Douglas LLC? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 22-284 is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to our last item tonight under Planning and Development. Item E, authorize the mayor to execute a temporary easement for performance of upgrades to sanitary sewer lines and related agreement granting a temporary easement from the city of Douglasville to SL Douglas Place LLC across and through real property known as parcel number 00250150138, abutting Stewart Mill Road at Reynolds Road for the purposes of improving a sanitary sewer line. Ms. Jordan, can you help us with that further?
Yes, thank you. We do have some additional information this evening to add to the meeting from Thursday night. So again, I would like to ask Mr. Joe Fowler to come forward. Thank you.
Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49, Douglasville. The Silverman Group that's developing all the properties in the area of the Bright Star Connector, Bright Star Road, in order to have capacity to serve the building that is now 95%, maybe 99% complete, has to do an upgrade on the sewer line through the Arbor Station subdivision, about 15 property owners, and I'm working with Silverman to get those properties, get the easements from all of those property owners, one of which happens to be right at the tail end of the portion of the expansion owned by the city of Douglasville. It's an eight-acre tract that's been owned by the city for a long time. It's 0.181 acres that is impacted. It's a temporary construction easement only because there's an existing sewer line there that the city, the WSA owns. It was initially granted by the city to the WSA years and years ago when Arbor Station was developed. They need a construction easement temporarily only for the purpose of upgrading that line. I think they're going from an 18 to a 24, if I'm not mistaken. But that's it. It's a temporary construction easement. We've dealt with all the property owners so far. We have agreements on most of them already, and this is one of the few remaining. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Questions, comments? Any, are we in, yes, Madam Mayor?
I do have a quick question, Attorney Fowler. Councilmember Watts brought to our attention, and I couldn't recall, but I know that, I'm sure he, because it's his ward, but I received a couple of concerns about, there was something in Chapel Hill. Was this the same area where they were having an issue?
No, ma'am, not in Chapel Hill. Actually, it's my ward, I believe.
Oh, it's your ward? What, do you remember what was going on? Is this the same, oh, I'm sorry, it's Arbor Station.
No, I don't, I've not heard of any objections or any issue. I mean, there was some, this was, it's about the same site where we did some, the WSA did some reconstruction on Anawaki Creek, too. Is that, am I in the right place?
That has happened, yes, sir.
Yeah, there was some, we had allowed some construction access for that. Because it's right at the dip, near right, right where Reynolds Road comes into Stewart Mill. So that whole area's been changed drastically over the years. And our, on our property, if I am understanding, is, runs through that little valley, correct?
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct.
So it's not really being used for anything right now. It's just basically, it's just basically a strip of land that we have.
I'll tell you where it is.
Isn't, it's in the Chapel Hill subdivision on the left, though?
There's a Chapel Hill subdivision.
Yeah, at Stewart's Creek.
Opposite, yeah, correct.
Okay.
But it's not in it, though.
Go ahead, Mr. Fowler. Tell us where it is.
There's a church on Stewart Mill Road that I happen to attend called Grace Presbyterian Church. If you turn right at Target and go a half mile downhill, it's behind that to the south.
Okay.
In the woods.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the reason we don't know a lot about us owning it, because it's back in the woods. You don't, you don't see it daily. You never there. Questions, comments? Moving forward, well, we, we do hope that this will help to, to get the, the work done on the sewer. And as Mr. Fowler has mentioned, there are other property owners that have to be addressed and have been addressed. So I will make a motion that we approve item 22-288.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve 22-288 by Chairman Adams. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. It's been properly moved in second to approve this item. Do we have any additional comments or questions from the body? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 22-288, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 22-288 is unanimously approved. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Planning and Development Committee. We are complete. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Great job. We'll move on then to item 14, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening in public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No items.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in culture, recreation, culture, tourism.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Technology Committee chaired by Mayor Protem, Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items under the Technology Committee tonight, which for some reason, I'm not sure why, they did not end up on the consent agenda, but nonetheless, here we are.
Because they were in executive session, we had to come out and pull them.
Oh, that's correct. That's right, okay. I knew there was a reason. All right, so the first item is to authorize the mayor to execute a quote with Barracuda Networks, Inc., for cybersecurity and email protection services. Mr. Samuel Jenkins will help us.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council. Sam Jenkins, 6695 Church Street. This is an item I brought to you guys last week in executive session. I have no other information to add, but I could ask some questions if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts or comments about this rather technical matter? All right, well, here, hearing none, I'd like to place item 22-289 in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much. I have a motion for approval. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved by Chair, Councilmember Mayor Protem, Terry Miller, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 22-289. Do we have any additional comments or questions from the elected officials? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 22-289 is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And our second item is to authorize the mayor to execute the Master Services Agreement Number 19712, Addendum Number One to Master Services Agreement Number One, and letter of removal for agreement with MCCI LLC to migrate the city's self-hosted Laserfish data to a Laserfish cloud subscription. Mr. Jenkins?
All right, so again, I have no additional information to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about this item here as well.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor Protem, what question would Mr. Jenkins want us to ask?
Laserfish. Laserfish.
Anything about laser fish fishing?
Well, we've, we've gone from micro fish many years ago to laser fish, so there's probably a good joke in there somewhere, but I don't know where it is. It's too late.
Keep it moving, keep it moving.
All right, well, hearing no honest questions, then I would like to take item 22-244 and place it in the, in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. And Chair, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. You're the second man tonight. You're the hype man. It's been properly moved in second for 22-244. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 22-244 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all we have under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. We'll move on then to item 19, Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any items under transportation, but I'll make comments under other business.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. Now we'll move to other business, and I will yield the floor to you, Councilmember Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really excited about our ribbon cutting tomorrow for the Highway 92 project and the fine work that our staff and all the contractors have done on this project. Just wanted to make sure we do have some loose ends that, that have not been completed, although we're still doing the ribbon cutting. I'd just like to ask our city manager, what is it after the ribbon cutting? How will we be insured? I know they'll eventually fix the items, but there's like some items, like the Macarley Street crossing, that red light won't be fixed in for six months. That's what we were told. So I just want to know, what is the, the highlights of making sure this is completed?
We still have routine meetings with GDOT.
That will continue until they basically exit Douglas County, go on to Paulding. So, I will make certain that we send you routine updates from those meetings. Macarley, I do know we have close to a year at least for Macarley. So, we know that at least that long they will be in because those are listed as two separate projects, but we will make certain to send those monthly reports.
Right. Along with safe pedestrian crossing. There's not one safe pedestrian crossing to cross those railroads, not one. So, but Ms. Hampton and I had a meeting, so it's kind of bittersweet. I'm glad that we, GDOT's ready for the, the ribbon cutting, and we were all invited, including the congressman. But anyway, just excited that we're moving along.
Yes, ma'am. And I did, received your letter, responded over the weekend, and the information that I received is that we can have an open door to continue the dialogue, and that is that they're intent to fulfill the entire contract. And that they do have ribbon cuttings around the state where there are other ancillary issues that are, you know, smaller in scale that they will move forward with a ribbon cutting. Especially with this timeframe, we had to kind of go around the congressman's schedule because they're in session, but they go back. And so, I mean, they're out of session now for the summer, but they're going back. And so, we wanted to definitely include Congressman Scott.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. So, I, I want those issues to be finished as well, just like you're saying. So, thank you for your, you've been a warrior, like a Doorman, Amazon woman, just making certain it's done. So, thank you for your tenacity and your concern in all the transportation projects, but specifically this one as well. We have had any other business from council members? It's raining, it's pouring, old man is snoring. Okay. I know, I know. So, we don't have any other business. So, move on to updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our chief of police, good to see you back. Chief Sparks, I know you've been away receiving awards. Can you give us a, let us know all the great things you've been doing and what you've been up to?
Well, we didn't, we didn't receive any awards. We did go to the Georgia Chief Convention and presented our Youth Against Violence program to several members of the chiefs, and we did get a great response from them, and hopefully some of these other cities will be implementing or doing something along the basis that we're doing. And then we went to the FBI conference, and we picked up information at that conference concerning database policing. And again, you know, a lot of the things that chiefs are talking about throughout this nation, we're already doing. And you all should be, we appreciate the backing that you, the mayor and the council give us to get the things we need, to put the programs together we need, to bring the community together. And so, we read on the top when it comes down to procedural justice and how we train our people, the equipment, the, the training, the community involvement. So, we, we rocking and rolling. And so, and then we went to the gang meeting where we presented, our guys presented a gang class at the gang conference, and, and they were really given a lot of accolades for how they presented a, a case that they started and from having little or no information to gathering all the information that we could make these charges. So, we, we, we in the fight to make sure that this city is taken care of from a criminal addicted thinking mindset and from a crime mindset. You know, so I just say that we will be coming out with, the three guys who did the shooting at the mall, they all have been arrested. And we will be bringing that information out to the, to the public in form of our social media and the newspapers. So, we waited till we got everybody in pocket, and so, we just moving on.
Thank you so much.
And so, we got a town hall meeting tomorrow at 6:30. And we're going to talk about entering all those and gangs and drugs and burglaries and how, how all these things are tying together with the, with, with the gangs and the drugs and, and the thefts and the guns. So, we're going to do that on the 16th, and we'll do it again on the 31st at Jesse Davis Park. And then on Tuesday, I meant Thursday, we started a, what we call an information, West Georgia Information Sharing Committee that we started here at Douglasville. We have, we were the FBI out talking about gangs, motorcycle gangs. We seeing them come around here in Douglasville. And so, we just getting ready for what's coming, you know. So, we have a plan, and we just going to work our plan to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm sorry, tomorrow's community meeting, is it near the community room, the town hall?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
6:30. Any, yes, sir, Councilmember Watts?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to ask Chief, I, I know you guys are doing a great job, and I know our sheriff's department is doing a great job. I'm just wondering, are we locally doing a good job in our court system, holding on to folks that we need to hold on to?
We've been having that conversation with the, with the DA's office, making sure that, I think they getting better with some of the sentencing, but I think like the judge had said in one of our meetings, some of these things goes back to the state. You know, the state don't want to hold some of these people, you know, and, you know, and, and a lot of these crimes are being committed by some of these juveniles. We need to, they don't want to hold these juveniles, you know? They want to call these kids now, when they do grown-up things, they grown-ups.
I just-
So, I think that amper's us a little bit.
I just, I'd hate to see us slip into the same issues that are being experienced around the country with folks not being held that need to be held.
Yes, sir.
And I know that's not y'all's job, but I appreciate y'all arresting them anyway.
It's frustrating. You get people, you see them, and you bust them with a, a large sum of, of drugs and cocaine, and then they, they get drug court, and, and then they're right back out. You, you arrest them again for doing the same thing. So, you know.
Yep. Thank you, Chief, for what you do. We appreciate it. I apologize for misspeaking and saying you received an award. I thought you, you wore the award while you, your presence in these places. So, thank you so much, and thank you for what you do to keep us safe. We'll move on then to our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Um, yes, ma'am. The only thing that I have is to ask Ms. Emily Hardaway to come up to give particulars of the event on Tuesday and Thursday that we have this week.
Okay. Ms. Emily, you waited all the way to the end of the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Emily Hardaway, Community Outreach Coordinator, 6695 Church Street. As mentioned earlier, tomorrow is the Highway 92 ribbon cutting, and it will be held at Jesse Davis Park. There will be, it's going to be held up in the, there's like a little cul-de-sac area, and that's where there's going to be a big tent. That's where it's going to be held at so that Highway 92 is in the background of the ceremony. The ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m., and we'll have programs and all that for everyone. And then immediately after the ceremony, there will be a luncheon held here at the Conference Center. And so, as soon as things wrap up, you're free to come here, eat lunch. There's not really a program for lunch. It's just kind of a eat and mingle, network, talk, fellowship type of event. So, that's tomorrow. And as the mayor mentioned, Congressman Scott will be in attendance as well, as well as GDOT representatives. And then Friday is the Jesse Davis Park Renovations Groundbreaking. That will be at 10:30 at Jesse Davis Park, and it will be held under the pavilion. Chris Bass, Director Bass is going to move the picnic tables so that we can have a nice ceremony there. And then I believe that immediately following that ceremony, there will be a luncheon in the Hawthorne Center. And that is the events for this week.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Emily. We appreciate it.
Any questions?
Emily, they mentioned something about us going over to Jesse Davis tomorrow for the ribbon cutting via city vehicle?
Yes. So, Mr. Roberts, I believe will have the van here at the Conference Center. I think most everyone replied that they would like to ride in the van, and so it'll be here at the Conference Center about, if you could get here between 10:15-ish, I think we're going to try to leave at 10:30 to head over to the, to Jesse Davis Park.
I, I just wanted to make sure there were enough that were going to do that to justify taking it. That's all I was curious about.
Yes, there is, it's, and, and it's a great idea because have you all in one place and can scoot you right up to the, to the tents where it needs to be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Emily. Anything else, city manager?